Welcome to our March or April work session. Thanks, everybody, for staying tonight. We had a great dinner. It was good to see everybody all smiling faces, masks. For our meeting on the 12th, obviously, next week is Spring Break, so we won't meet next week, but Mr. Raper, John will have the pledge. Appalachian High School OTC will be here to present the colors. We'll approve our minutes. We'll approve the agenda and our committee reports. And we'll have some superintendent recognitions on the 12th. We may or may not have some visitors or requests to appear before the board. We're going to start out tonight with time allowance, I guess.
I'm Tom Oden, I've served as financial advisor to the school district for a number of years. I always want to start these things by just saying, you know, break one in, but y'all can't get me on for so long. I appreciate it and I'm proud of all the work we've done, totally even. I think we're in a really good spot. Jennifer asked me to come sit with you tonight. She wanted me to cover a couple of topics with sales tax. It's been a couple of years since we've been together face to face. I know we had some Zoom calls back in 2000. She wanted me to talk about the sales tax. She asked me to say some words about the economy. I'll tell you all the front end. I'm not an economist, but I'll talk more about that in a moment. And then just talk about your outstanding bonds. Just give you a refresher of where we stand in terms of outstanding debt and how that looks. See here, mind driving. There we go. This is the chart we look at and for our new board members, I probably will take things in somewhat the same fashion every time, just to, you know, perspective, but we are currently in what is loss six for our new board members again. Losses are generally in five years, education's lost in five year increments. The board's historically bothered bond authorization along with five year sales tax. For those recent elections back in 2019, some bonds issued in 2020. That sales tax started just last October and checks are distributed one month after their landing. So access numbers later for the month of October comes to us in the month of November. So at this point, you got checks from November and you actually got your March check today, which is a very good check. But this chart just shows you, you had tremendous growth for through the decades of sales. Both, both really just grew. But we topped out last year. I want to say topped out, we're still going. But in 2021, for the calendar year distribution, you get 16.9 million in round numbers. And turn over a little more page, just give you a little more range of detail, month to month. The boat, but we always talk about what were our most recent 12 months, right? The most recent history we've got, that stands at 17.355 million dollars. What was collecting by school district in sales tax, not calendar year, the most recent 12 months. You actually received a check today after this went to press, which was, which would up that to about 17.6 million now. So this March replaced it last March, we did even better. You can see last year, that growth rate compared to the year prior was 22%. And so far, we're having another strong year so far in the first three months this year. On a rolling average basis, you're up around 12%, which is really kind of unheard of and frankly unreasonable to think that's going to be typical. And that same pace, I might say we're not going to get growth. But that's, that's really real growth effect. We didn't make it good. One note about that 2021 growth. This is just a comparison to select systems around Barrow County that I think is useful. Just to, you know, how are we performing versus everyone else? The takeaway from this is that every, on average, these systems around you grew at 21% last year. So y'all were special and had a great year, but everybody in this region had a great year. Second takeaway there, we could see some pretty heavy inflation over last year, baked into this number as well. So, you know, again, great growth, not exactly an outlier for this part of the state. But this region has grown along the other regions of the world. So very good, good growth in sales tax. One thing we always want to do, or periodically want to do, is sort of stress test our sales tax. I'm going to get around to making comparison sales tax towards our bond payments. Just for some historical perspective, the last time we really saw a prolonged recession, we had a brief recession in 2020. But really for a long one, we set period around 2008. And so how did our sales tax perform during that period? You saw about 19% decline from 2007 to 2010. If we were to sort of stress test our sales tax now and apply that same test, it dropped down to about 14 million. About where we ended in calendar year. So again, I'm not predicting that. I'm just trying to give you sort of an order of magnitude that we saw a shift or if a recession were to happen. Similarly, this is your net little tax digest for a similar period. That I just, we've got the tax commissioner coming up next, he'd probably give you some better impression than I can. But you generally expect, if you do have a recession, it takes a little while for that to roll through. That's I guess, as consistent as a month to month sales tax. You saw that draw down about 30% from its peak to trough from 2010, that's 28, 2008 to 2000, this actually should be 2012. Takes a few more years, you have a reassessment cycle, it doesn't exactly what it would be. But about 30% drawdown. If you saw that from your current mill value, that'd be about $750,000 mill less that you would collect for letting each of the property tax. So again, not, not at all predicting that, but we did kind of want to just take a breath and see if they reflect that. But the other thing to keep in mind is throughout that recession, this is your FTE count. Kids don't go away just because we have a little hiccup somewhere. They also leave a seed, and so I just want to keep that in mind as well. You grow basically consistently throughout that. You know, even when you have a recession, you may see lower birth rates that definitely flow through to the school system. Five or six or seven years when those children actually arrive. So not a lot to take away there, but just, we, we still have to perform most of the same functions in the event. I'm going to pause here because I really do need to emphasize that I'm not an economist, but I've been asked to speak about the economy. I was thinking about that, I've been doing some research, reading things. Today, I have no idea what's going to happen next. People was writing with you about that. I don't know where we're going from here. But I will tell you, my research, reading papers from various economists, they don't either. So I may be entirely qualified to be an economist after doing some research on that. But I'm going to show you, these are just observations I've made. You know, we'll draw our own conclusions, but these are just key things I found interesting when sort of looking into the economy. The first one is, is money supply. I think it's a measure of basically money that's available out in the economy, many deposits. This also includes currency, we're all holding our pockets, but historically, you've seen money supply grow about 6%. In 2020, I would say is where we broke things. And there's a half trillion dollars of excess money on the economy. We flip over one more slide, you can guess what that leads to. We're now seeing about seven and a half percent inflation. You contribute that to several things. One, too much money in the economy, very loose economic policy. We've got scarce goods, right? Harder to buy things. There's fewer things that we all want to buy. Prices didn't go up. And we really haven't really seen labor, labor force participation rates return to where they were preended. You know, that being true, the commentators, their statements sort of up, up until recently, said they wanted to see, they wanted to actually push inflation above 2% and on a sustained basis above 2%. And also wanted to keep rates low until they had, blew their quote was maximum employment consistent with that level of inflation. And that, you know, the unemployment readings are down, the labor force participation lines have to back up where it should be. Chairman Powell's comments just last week, he actually said the labor market still travels extremely tight. That Ukraine situation, US initiation of the supply chains, obviously flow through to give you pretty high inflation rates, which we're seeing right now. What I expect we'll see is the Federal Reserve will now do what they can to try to defeat that inflation. This market is changing rapidly. This was a chart of Fed Fund Futures a little more than two weeks ago. This will be the day, maybe two days after the Fed raised rates a quarter point. At that time, the Fed Fund Futures predicted that you would see a quarter point increase in May. Maybe no increase, or maybe a 50% basis point increase in June, that's four basis point increases thereafter. And I know I'm getting a little technical here. If we go from two weeks ago to one week ago, you had the Fed Chairman and Fed Governors come out and start saying, we're probably going to be more aggressive than what we do in terms of interest rate policy. And so this chart, it's sort of hard to follow if you look at it normally. What this chart is saying is that now the expectations, once the futures market, this is a week ago, was a 50 basis point increase in May, another 50 basis point increase in June, another 50 basis point increase in July, and then a series of quarter basis point increases thereafter. They're trying to tighten monetary policy, start to drain some of that excess supply of money out of the economy. Make it more expensive to borrow positions. Tighter monetary policy to try to slip in a regular question. Another thing we will see perhaps flow through, you're going to start hearing, I'm thinking more and more about demand destruction. I would think of this as buying things I need versus things I want. The more money you have to spend on the things I need, the less I have to spend on the things I want. This is a chart that just shows you gasoline prices and also diesel fuel, which are both costing you a third again as much as they did at the beginning of the year. The more money I spend on gasoline prices, on gas, on housing. They told that food and energy are about 20% of the average American household expenditures. Housing is about another 20%, and those two things are getting much more expensive rapidly. More households spending on those things, the less they're going to have to spend elsewhere. At some point with inflation, you start to get what we call demand destruction. Just, I don't have as many free dollars to go spend on other things. Hopefully, that will slowly come to a down a little bit. And I really think the Federal Reserve now is sort of thinking, if there's some of their decisions and some of their comments, it seems like they were kind of hoping for sort of a COVID unfolding. People go back to work, supply chain issues correct themselves. You get rid of some of that scarcity, maybe prices will come down, right? They're now looking around and thinking we might be behind the curve and those things won't happen. So I think they probably will try to push monetary policy to a tighter situation than this. But again, I'm not an economist, this is just Tom's musings at this point. But the other thing we're seeing is a, what we call a flat yield curve. This just means interest rates for short periods are very similar to interest rates for long periods. A pause here to say, this is something we've taken advantage of for a long time at the school. Right? Things haven't been this flat, but we've had the ability to borrow long-term money and not spend a whole lot of money in terms of interest rates doing that. We're getting into kind of an extreme situation where short-term rates are coming up a lot faster than long-term rates. At the closing market today, I think the two-year rate was a 235 compared to 10-year rate, 7.1. Twos and tens, I'm going to show you in the next page, are sort of where people start to look at what's called yield curve inversion. One more slide beyond this to show you that. A normal yield curve, meaning if you say, well, it's a one-year rate, two-year rate, put this all at 30. You generally expect that to be up or slow. And the idea is just, I take a more risk, not be perfect, but any more tax on more risk, the longer that you can fund someone. If great risk, it's not going to be repaid, or even the inflation's going to erode the value of that dollar of that, the longer it's out. That being said, inflation isn't all bad. It beats the alternative of deflation. We actually want a little bit of inflation, inflation in the economy. And if you think about that in big, sort of big picture, if I expect something to cost more next week, I'm going to buy it this week. Right? Inflation. If I expect something to be cheaper next week, I'm not buying it this week. All right, so a deflationary environment is actually worse than an inflationary environment because it can grind things to a halt. Because everybody's waiting on the thing that needs to be less expensive. So inflation, that in and of itself is a terrible, excessive inflation is what we're worried about. But what we're going to see, as I mentioned earlier, is in this, this kind of Fed slowing down the economy without pushing this into recession. That's sort of the million dollar question at this point in time in my mind. And doing a little research, they weren't able to do that in 1965, 1985, and 1994. They were all, they were averaging certain rates without pushing this into recession. So it's not impossible, but I would also argue we've got a different set of circumstances than they've ever dealt with before. We may be starting from a point that's really difficult to overcome. I did mention the two-year versus the 10-year treasury inversion. Everywhere you see this blue line dip below that black line is where you see two-year rates move higher than 10-year rates. In general history, and it's not 100%, not, not absolutely every time, but more often than not, what you see that yield curve inversion, there's a recession 12 to 14 months. Important point is that flattened yield curve is not predicting a recession, but it's telling you that we have the right conditions for a recession. All right, what it means, one thing, one way to interpret that is investors are expecting short-term rates are going to be increased, tight monetary policy, but long-term rates are coming well. Maybe they're not, their outlook for the long-term economy is a necessary little break. I'm expecting a slowdown over time, and I'm sure we do. You've already seen three-year, five-year, seven-year treasuries go higher than the 10-year. You watch that inversion sort of roll forwards towards you. The two-year, the 10-year, I think I was in one basis point today. So I would expect a yield curve inversion is going to happen again. That's not necessarily predicting a recession. But it's telling you, we might have the right economic conditions to have a recession over, you know, the next two years or so. Now, one of the most famous quotes about economists in general, again, trying to nod, is Harry Truman once said, I'd give anything for a one-naked economist. And so I will give you a few on the other hand, just to double against everything I've said at this point. Businesses still have really strong earnings. We've seen some wage growth. It's not keeping up with inflation necessarily, but you have that wage growth. But we've got low debt burdens in the country nationally, even though we have a pile of debt at the federal level. As a percentage of GDP, that is not costing us that much, I mean, historically speaking, because we have super low interest rates. We've still got really strong vehicle sales and home prices that held us very well. So there's some counterpoints to everything I've just told you that tell you, we, we're kind of getting unprecedented in time. I don't really know where we go from here. We certainly have a number of things that sort of point towards the recessionary side. But I don't think it's a, hey, tomorrow we're in recession type of deal, right? I mean, that could develop over the next couple of years. It's important to us because sales tax is, is pretty well directly related to those economic conditions. We pay all of our bonds from sales tax. The last thing I would say on the economy is, one thing Jerome Powell did say last week, which was, today, the economy is strong and is well positioned to handle tighter monetary policy. So again, and on the other hand, I'm not saying we are having a recession for sure. We might not. It may be entirely possible that this is, this is different, but we've got a lot of the conditions that could cause that. Things are still great. You're collecting more last month in sales tax than you did a year ago. You know, spending performance right now is fantastic, so I don't mean this to be overly negative. But we don't want to go maxing out our debt service against that sales tax either, right? We kind of want to, want to play with an idea of what could happen. You know, I've told these folks for a long time, my job is to help you sort of deep this, right? I'm not here to put you to pants in corners. I'm here to try to help you spot where it might be running into any problems. So that's the extent of my comments on the economy. Again, those are Tom's, Tom's musings and not, not my company's or anybody else, but I, just some things I found interesting. The good news when we turn to your outstanding debt is that we're in a really, really good shape from that perspective. This board has done things over the last 10 to 15 years to put it in a great, rock-solid position in terms of debt and effective use of debt. This, and it's hard to make it hard to say it, you know, I've got it there in front of you. This is a schedule that just shows all the principal interests. I've got a big long sheet that I give you from time to time, if you have interest in each of the individual issues. But this just shows you the, the total debt that's outstanding and the payments that are on. If you look at it in a short form, on page 20, this just plots our annual debt service payments against that most recent 12 months, or the 12 months in February 22 of sales tax elections. So your maximum payment's a little under nine and a half million. Actually, if we include the March collection, your last 12 months of sales tax is over 17. We've got about $8 billion, you know, if you think about it in terms of coverage, we're covering our debt about 1.8 times from that sales tax. We have debated for years, what's the, this is one of the new board members, our Fed人们, forgive me. But we've spent a lot of time over the years debating what's the right bond structure. Is it, do we try to pay off debts as quickly as we can? Do we maybe pay more in early years, less in later years? Where we have settled mostly is that we pretty much had a flat yield curve and attracted long-term interest rates. And it's a lot easier for us to shorten up debt than just go back and extend them if we ever did throw. We've also looked at the school district as growing and we need to leave room. We need to leave borrowing capacity for the next thing. And we need to leave pay-as-you-go capacity for things that we don't necessarily want to borrow. Right? We don't want to finance a school loan for 20 years. We don't want my smartphone works and they pay it so for 10, 20 years. And at the end of the day, our debt, debt's dead. And one of the things we've always talked about is that as a school system, we're not going to get out of debt and tire and pay for the house. You know, the odds are that this school district will always have some debt as long as we're here growing this school district. And so from that perspective, what we want to do is we want good debt. And when markets offering us cheap, long-term debt, we're happy to take it. Know that we can shorten it up anytime, or mostly anytime we want to, and I'll show you more on that. But for now, our payments bring in about 8 million, I say that's bringing in about 8 million dollars more than our payments. And we're able to do a lot of pay-as-you-go construction, but we don't have to borrow. Because we are cash flow constrained. Now, that may be a little excessive, but this next chart shows you where we were just a few years ago when we were planning the sales tax. That 2014 line is two sales tax elections ago. 2019, January 2019 is when we called to have that referendum. We were bringing in about 11.2 million. When we layered the net debt on top, we were at 9.4. We had less than 2 million of sort of free cash flow budgeted in. Your sales tax has grown by $6 million a year since that point. So, you know, we're up to 17 million. We probably didn't plan for quite this much free cash flow, but it's actually, I think, worked into our favor because there's a lot of things that are being done now without debt. Eventually, we'll, we'll come back to that as well, because you do have more borrowing, you have more projects to leave more borrowing, or perhaps necessitate more borrowing. I want to show you this, just the construction inflation for a school. This is Bureau Labor Statistics puts out an inflation index for new school building construction. This is year over year, we saw school construction projects, this is nationwide, get more expensive at a rate of about 12%. Now, on the ground, Joe Burnham may say it gets more than 12%, but again, this is the particular basket that the federal government's looking at to try to track these statistics. The folks who've been able to borrow and get construction done have done so, we got it done, contracted prices. He thought about construction, we started, what, 2020? We're really lucky, we got those things done in 2020, even though we've been in debt, doing, those projects would be at least 12% more expensive if we not got those done. And then lastly, like I said, we have a number of bond issues that are currently outstanding. And we've issued them every few years as needed. But now we're into that program and what we have are really a series of ladder bond calls. And that's, I think that's the term we probably, maybe understand more than most. We have calls on our bonds that become available to us every few years. They're different issues. For instance, 2012, they're callable starting February 1, 2023. 16 is 26, 17 is 27, the 20s is 23. If we ever get a fee and we've got just too much cash flow in, we have a way that we can pay off debt anytime we want to, within reason, you know, within a reasonable amount of time. My bet is that we have needs for most of those money, that your situation changes drastically. Our growth stops. We don't have new building necessarily. The way we've got our debt structured over time with calls, the ability to pay off the bond without penalty every couple of years gives you a ton of flexibility in terms of what, how we can operate moving forward. If we do decide, you know, we really got facilities in pretty good shape, we will retire this. The flip side of that is, there's a column there, or a run there called provisional bond yield. That's the cost, the original approximate cost of our, our various bond issues. We've got debts that go up to 2037, that costs us about 1.8%. I don't know if I quoted it earlier, but two-year treasury is like 235 today. So, you know, we might not pay some of these things off if we can give them the opportunity. We might just park that money in treasury and earn something off the onerous cost of this. So we really, I'm proud of how disciplined this board has been in terms of going out, recognizing the opportunities, being open to issuing longer-term bonds. Because it's put us in a great place in terms of, you know, can we withstand the downturn in sales tax? Can we pay it off? If it's more advantageous just to park that money in US Treasury and earn what it's costing us. You have all the options on 40, and I'm just extremely proud of the way y'all have been good super disciplined over the years and sort of stuck to the plan, you know, taking what the market is getting in terms of cheap longer-term rates. So, Jennifer, is there anything I've left out that you want, that we've talked about? Anybody on the board, is there any questions coming up or? My information's on the front of this, if there's, if you ever have questions, I understand you. They've called me before, but I want you always to feel like any of you can call me at some stretch tomorrow and talk about something you're, you're not comfortable with, or that I overlook, that you won't be considered, please give me a call. I'm always happy to talk to you about, you know, whatever you're concerned about. Overall, I think you're in great shape. I've got a little nervousness about where things in general go from here, but I think it's imminent and, you know, we'll see how things play out, but you guys are in great shape.
Thanks so much, Tom. Thanks, Tom. Thanks for your guidance and your information. Okay, next we have Jessica and Guy from the Tax Commissioner's Office. I guess, Guy, you're going to, Tax Assessors.
Appreciate the opportunity and coming to you, give you some updates and a couple of items that, and discussion or whatever, but glad to see some familiar faces. Kenny and Lisa and others, and I appreciate that. I am the chief appraiser of the assessors office here in Barrow County. I've been here a little over two years. And since our last meeting last year, a couple of things I just want to go over with you regarding what has been done. what has been done since last year in our office. For one, we have a new website. We, uh, were awarded an internship grant from the ACCG to create a new website. It's fresh, it's informative, it's user-friendly, and a lot of good information on there. And that's, uh, that's good for our citizens, and that's what, um, I was looking to, uh, develop. And, um, we have a young man from North Georgia that came in as an intern for a couple of months and helped us with that, did a great job. So, um, the new website, number two, we had, um, our appeal valuation. Person can, uh, appeal their evaluation online now. And that's, that's real good. That's, uh, it's very easy to use. It's through a few public sites. Works very well, and, um, we're glad to, um, have that as an assistance to the citizens to appeal their valuation. Number three, we implemented the mobile assessor software in iPads. And that is as of October. You ask, what is that? Well, that is iPads. It's a software that works with our Win Gap system, which is our appraisal system in our office. And, um, we have four iPads and our appraisers go out and they do field work on the iPads. And, uh, once they complete, let's say, a house, uh, they go out and measure it or collect the data on it. It goes to, um, me or one of our assistant, um, chief appraisers. And, um, they qualified as being approved. It goes to the cloud overnight, it goes back into our system. So it alleviates the, um, data entry and the errors that is created through data entry. Plus, it gives us, um, they can take fresh and new, uh, photos of the properties and, uh, it really works out very good. Uh, number four, we're in a midst and finishing up a commercial and industrial revaluation. That was approved last year. And, um, G-Mas, which is our vendor who is, um, doing a revaluation of all commercial industrial properties. That should be finished next month, which is April, mid-April sometime. And so, um, that is, uh, ongoing, is being ongoing and everything commercially and industrially has been checked. Made sure the correct data was, uh, was there and so forth, new pictures, and of course, some of the new valuations, uh, as of the twenty twenty two digest. And number five, we've navigated, as you've had, through the pandemic and the ongoing real estate market. Crazy market, we all know that, and, um, it has been a challenge keeping up with values. Um, and I guess, uh, as far as a digest update. I just mentioned the commercial and industrial revaluation and that is ongoing, but values are increasing. Go ahead and figure that out, which I know you have. They are increasing. And by law, my job is to make sure that our digest incorporates fair market values. Fair market values are values that, of course, uh, happens in market. And, um, with that said, we've added, um, nine hundred and fifty-nine new houses this year for the twenty twenty-two digest. Opposed to six hundred and eighteen for the twenty twenty-one digest. So, you know, that's over three hundred new houses. And that mobile assessor has helped us do that because of the, um, step of the data entry step that it has taken out. Gives us more time to manage, uh, get good, uh, workflow, and that's really helped us with that. But, um, that is going to still increase next year, I feel. Uh, we've got several developments going on in the county and will be going on for the, um, twenty twenty-three digest. So, um, the housing markets in the county is still going crazy, like it is everywhere in North Georgia. I was down in South Georgia Friday to a seminar down in Cordill. And when you go down below Maiden, you see a vast difference in growth. You feel, you see a vast difference in the, the market. And so from Maiden North, um, is where the growth is really taking place at in Georgia. And of course, Barrow County is the third fastest-growing county in the state of Georgia. Everyone, everyone wants to move to Barrow County, almost everyone. Out of state, a lot of people out of state is moving to our area. Uh, a lot of, um, economic growth, a lot of industrial, commercial, um, interests in our county. And so, um, we're, we're on a verge of, of, if you want to call it, an explosion like we haven't seen before. So, um, you know, with that said, I think the market itself is, is going to be, um, I think it's going to level out this summer. Um, I don't think it's going to go keep going up and up, and I think it's going to level out and stay there for a while. I don't see it dipping, and this is just my personal opinion, and I've been in this for thirty-three years. Um, a lot of you went in. Um, so I believe the market is going to stay where it's at and level out. So with that said, I mean, we're, we've still got a lot of growth ahead of us. Um, the assessment notices will be mailed on May sixth. And of course, the last day of calling appeal will be June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. We will close the digest as of April fourteenth. Now, um, why is the market still going to be crazy? Well, for one, inventory is still low. To have a healthy inventory, they say you should have at least nine months of inventory. We're struggling to carry two months of inventory. So inventory is still low. Number two, material chain is increasing, okay? There's still some things that builders can't get, but as far as overall, it's increasing. You know, the material chain, um, things are being made so people can start building more and more. Number three, interest rates, uh, are still low. Anything below six is still a good rate. I mean, I, I remember when rates were, you know, fifteen, eighteen percent. Anything below six is still a very good rate. And we're still below that and probably will be below that, um, all during this year. Um, so, you know, those things, um, and, and of course, people wants to live in Barrow County. They want to go to school in Barrow County. They want their kids to go to school in your schools. So, um, that is a drawing point to our town. So, and that's, that's, uh, to be committed, you know, to teachers and the staff, the board, and everyone that is part of the school system, so. Uh, be proud of that. People want to live here. People want their, the children to go to your schools, so. I say your schools, I live in Wolf County, so, yes. But our schools in Barrow County. Now, we have added twelve hundred seventy-six homestead exemption applications, what, homestead exemptions for the twenty twenty-two digest. This is the last week for those. Friday is the last day, so we still have many, probably will come in in the next three days. Three hundred and eighteen of those twelve six, uh, twelve seventy-six are senior exemptions. And then we have thirty-two veteran, disabled veteran extensions. So, um, it's, it's still going and a lot of moving parts, um, to, um, the digest still in, in play. The housing market, uh, may be slowing a bit, like I said, slightly. I don't think it's going to slow, I think it's going to level out. And I had, I read an article, one guy said, he was an appraiser from, I think, the Midwest. And he said, it's like the market was going or driving at a hundred and thirty-five miles an hour. And now it's going a hundred and twenty-seven miles an hour. So, you know what I'm saying? It's still moving very, very fast and it's still crazy, but, um, it is still positive, very, very positive. And like I said, I think it's going to level out. Um, just, uh, the starter homes, the hundred and seventy-five thousand, the two hundred thousand dollar starter homes are probably gone. You're not going to find them anymore. Um, three years ago, two years ago, even you can find those, the starter homes. Right now, the starter homes are probably over three hundred thousand. So, um, it's, it's a crazy market, like I said. Digest update. The net digest is approximately, will increase by fifteen percent. Okay? And that is taken into account appeals. Uh, that's taken into account, still in effect, the commercial industrial update, land tables are being updated now. Um, neighborhood updates that we're working on, uh, homestead exemption, conservation use exemption applications. We're still working on personal property returns, the business returns. So a lot, still a lot of moving parts, um, in the digest. And we've got about three weeks or so before we close it, so a lot of work still needs to be done, but we're, we're getting it. Um, but approximately fifteen percent from last year is what we're looking at. I was going to give you an example here of a market. This guy here, or this person bought their property in September, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, for two hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred dollars. That was a brand-new house. Then he sold it in January fifth, twenty twenty-two for three hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Forty-seven percent increase in fourteen months. Had you like to have that, you know, that, um, investment somewhere. Uh, that is what we're facing. As soon as we, um, adjust something in a month, it's, it's, we have to adjust it again. So it's like hitting a moving target. Um, I did have some handouts. I don't know, I know the board has my notes or was sent my notes at one time within the last couple of weeks. Um, but basically, um, historic residential, historic transfer improved sales, okay? In twenty twenty-one, on new construction, we're talking about eight hundred and fifteen sales of new construction. Average price is three hundred and nineteen thousand ninety dollars. Same thing for existing construction, old homes. We had fourteen hundred ninety-two sales in twenty twenty-one. Average sale, two hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two. And then those combined, new and existing constructions, we had over twenty-three hundred sales in twenty twenty-one with an average sale price of three hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty-six. So a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of growth still coming, and the market is still going crazy. So as far as the digest is concerned, it's increasing, and I, I expect it to still increase in years to come. Market will level out this year, but I don't think it will drop. You know, nothing like it was in two thousand eight or anything like that. I expect it to just level out instead of continue to go up. Think it's going to level out, it's going to stay there. And, uh, for who knows how many years to come, but that's just my opinion. So any questions about the digest before I go further to the next area of concern?
Guy, do, do you think the, the mix, let's use the term mix, uh, of commercial to residential? Do you see that getting better as we grow or will that, will that get worse in terms of more heavily on the, on the residential?
Well, I know that last year it was like sixty-seven, thirty-three, something like that as far as commercial to residential, residential being sixty-seven, commercial being the thirty-three. Um, I do know that there are a lot of interests, there is a lot of interest in Barrow County with industry. Big industry coming in, big projects coming in. I'm hoping that will close the gap, uh, a, a little bit. Ideally, you'd like to have it fifty-fifty, no doubt about that. I don't think, um, it will ever be there. I don't think any county has a fifty-fifty. But I would like for it to be closer, uh, sixty, forty, something in that range, maybe in the fifties. But, um, as, as we grow as a county, um, I know there are, um, industrial and commercial, um, major projects coming in and that is interested in Barrow County. So, um, I think it will get better over time.
I do have a question. When you're talking about that, um, going out and, and talking to people. How is this digest, you know, how you said the guy sold his house for so much more? And that's what's going to make all the houses around there and their taxes go up. You know, because of the, you have to adjust it. What about the farmers and stuff that are over there? That makes their, you know, because they can afford to keep paying the taxes because all the new homes in the subdivisions that are now going on are now making their property go up and they can't afford to keep their land.
And in, in the appraising process, um, there are studies we run, the coverage of studies. And we run them on particular types of properties. We run them on commercial properties, we run them on rural properties, we run them on small tracts, large tracts. We run them on each individual neighborhood subdivision. And if, um, the ratio based on sales and a particular type of property, if it needs to be adjusted, then we adjust accordingly. Just because this property went a forty-seven percent. Again, this is one sale, one sale doesn't make a market, okay? That's the reason you run the sales ratio study within a subdivision, particular area, whatever the case may be, type of property. Um, and so we have to look at the amount of sales, um, but to answer your question, just because that happened in a subdivision will not affect an agriculture or a, um, you know, a farm, um, schedule. They are studied as farms or agricultural properties rather than this residential one. It's just because the residential properties go up, whatever twenty percent they say, doesn't mean that agricultural lands go up twenty percent. It may only go up seven percent. Plus, there's exemption, um, exemptions if they qualify. Agriculture exemptions, which are a conservation use program. It's a ten-year program that really helps farmers and agricultural properties if they qualify for it and it reduces their taxes. Most of the time, it's, if it's vacant land, most of the time, ninety percent. So there, and, and they got qualified for.
Well, I know, I know around Tom Miller, a lot of them that have been there forever are selling their land because of all that growth. So I know there's a lot of people that think that our county's so small still. And as you said, it's not. It's growing. There's tons and there's people, tons of subdivisions. And when all those, I mean, all the way down from the end of Tom Miller, all the way back, sell their land. You know what's going to go in there. You know how that's going to affect not only the tax digest, but the school system.
Sure, it is, sure. If any growth affects both the digest and, of course, the schools.
So our county's not small anymore.
No, it's not your small-town, you know, county unit. We have over, we have almost thirty-five thousand officers. And that's basically a median-grade county. You know, it's not going to have three hundred thousand, but, um, it's not Banks County when you have, you know, twelve thousand people. So it is growing and, um, like I said, a lot of people wants to move. Good access. You got three sixteen going right through the county. We're right between Atlanta and Athens. Great location.
Yes, um, the, I, I, I heard you saying, and I have a question, look quick. The, um, so the new assessments are going on May sixth. But some assessments have been done, correct? Because I know for this year, you know, where people say the taxes are going up, but we would say, we didn't raise taxes. The mill rate has stayed the same here for, since, oh, now, uh, two thousand, two thousand, I think, two thousand seven, two hundred. Uh, since two thousand seven, the, the mill rate has stayed the same, but obviously, the multiplier has changed because people tax, you know, people's property values have gone up a lot. So, and to your point of, you know, if it is a moving target and obviously on the real estate growth, so I feel your pain, right? You get, the money change every week. But I'm just concerned about the stability for citizens, you know, because obviously we see all this money dumping into our, into our economy. And, you know, much to what Tom said, we know that a lot of that is a result of inflation right now. We have all the extra money floating around and there's going to be that utilization. You know, I'm just, you know, are we gonna speak about that and keep going? Cause if, if they're gonna be, I'm just a little concerned as we continue to talk, you know, just applying pressure, you know, continuing to apply pressure to the people, how we're gonna slow it down, you know? And I know the people are gonna panic when they hear that, oh my gosh, they're gonna raise my property value again. Because hasn't there been already some assessments done in this past year already, one time?
You talking about for twenty-two to that?
For, no, for this past year.
Twenty-one?
Yes.
Yes, yes, of course.
So there's gonna be a fifteen percent increase from last year?
Well, that's the digest. That's not saying that people's value or taxes is going up fifty. That's the overall digest. A lot of that's growth. There are some, um, you know, out of almost a thousand homes, that's gonna break. You know, the digest go up from what it was last year. Um, and yes, we have adjusted values accordingly. Understand, when we have to adjust the digest, and in some of the, the notes I, that I sent to you all, I gave an example of utility values. Now, if we don't, if our values do not follow the market, because we are audited by the Department of Audits.
We get in trouble.
That's the reason that I have to keep up the values per the sales. Cause if we don't, then we get penalized if it's not fixed. You come, become out of compliance with state law, with the Department of Revenue, the Department of Audits. And you get in trouble and you get fined if it's not fixed. So, there is. And I'm, I'm not shooting to get our values at forty percent. What I'm saying is our ratio of forty percent, which would be one hundred percent of value. You know, I do wanna get it close enough so we won't get penalized and not receiving the ratio, not receiving the revenue money from the public utilities, which I have to be above thirty-eight percent, thirty-eight or greater in order to receive all of the revenue we should receive from public utilities. Last year, um, and I gave an example in my notes, um, that I sent you all. Last year, the school lost ninety-one thousand dollars, almost ninety-two thousand dollars in revenue because we fell below that thirty-eight percent. The county itself, the county portion of the village lost fifty-six thousand. So overall, the county as a whole lost over a hundred and forty-seven thousand, almost a hundred and forty-eight thousand in revenue from public utilities because of the ratio falling below thirty-eight. We were still in compliance. As long as it stays above thirty-six, we're in compliance with state law. But we do get penalized if it falls below thirty-eight.
And that, that's, it has to come from somewhere, so then we would sit up, right?
So, I mean, it's, it, it's, sometimes you're in between the rock and hard place. But we have to do what law tells us to do. And so, um, I guess with that said, you know, it's, it's just, we have to follow the law and we have to do what, what our jobs are supposed to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else about the digest?
I just have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
What percentage of Barrett County is still considered agricultural?
Um, I would dare to say probably, and I don't have that in front of me, but I would dare to say, um, forty percent. There's still some big properties out there that have cows, have horses that are, is not developed. You know, I'm talking about overall, I mean, there's still a good part of, of Barrett County that, that is still agricultural.
So let's go back to the money that we lost, uh, because we fell below thirty-eight percent. What's being done to correct that?
We've increased the values accordingly to the sales that have taken place. So hopefully, um, this county, now, now you understand they're a year behind. So the ratio from the audit department for this year is based on twenty twenty-one sales. It's not based on twenty twenty-two sales, that'll be next year. So evaluations that were done last year, which we did a lot with, uh, our rural track schedule last year. So hopefully, um, our ratio will be above thirty-eight for this year based on the twenty twenty-one digest and sales.
Okay, so my next question is, how did this happen? I mean, how did, how did we get below where we needed to be so that, so that the school system did not receive the benefit of this ninety-two thousand dollars?
Um, well, that, 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 we'll, we'll cross that bridge in just a second.
Okay.
Can you give me a few minutes?
Yes.
Okay. She didn't have a microphone there. Well, to answer the question, the board of assessors has policies. Their policy to review all properties within the county over a three-year period. Okay? Their policy is a three-year review cycle, appraisers that shall review sales ratio studies annually on all property types and make value changes as necessary to truly reflect fair market sale values. All properties should be reviewed and value changes applied as necessary within a three-year period as required by the Department of Revenue appraisal procedure main. That's the policy we have to go by. Now, there have been three causes of this value crisis. I'm gonna call it a value cross, crisis in the last fifteen years. One, the recession, two thousand eight recession. People kept their properties because of the low value, made improvements during that time. If you remember, a lot of people lost their houses. A lot of people left their houses and moved back into with relatives, with mom and dad. They closed the garage, they finished the attic, they finished the basement in order for families to come back and move with them. Okay, improvements. A lot of those were done without permits. Understand, when we go out, uh, and we work, um, on permits, a permit's gotta be taken out. Uh, the only other way for us to discover it is if we discover about it or a sale. But there's a lot of properties out there that have not sold but has been improved without a permit. Okay? Number, number two, the COVID pandemic. What happened during pandemic? People were at home for two years, okay? They made many improvements and the housing market increased. They made many improvements without permits. Okay? Number three, the lack of prioritizing the three-year review. The review that I just read, in years past, there was a lack of prioritizing it. In other words, trying your best to get it done. And therefore, you know, um, in order to be uniform and equitable with values, our data must be as correct as possible. It will take a parcel-by-parcel review of those properties in order to get it correct as possible. You know, I can go in, I can change schedules all you want. But that's gonna make a mess of things because of the data is not correct. There are a lot of things out there we do not have on digest for one reason or another, and I named three of them, three reasons why. So, my best microphone might have the same reason. So there's options, there's four options. One is a revaluation, one point one million. Number two, it's hiring a company to come in and review a third of the county, approximately twelve thousand parcels a year. That's forty-two to forty-seven dollars per parcel. That's five hundred and four thousand dollars a year. Number three, employ a data collector to review a third of the parcels. And of course, this person will be responsible for nothing but reviewing the parcels. We have the tools to do that with, the iPads. And that's basically what it was created to do. We use it for all kinds of, um, new construction. But it was created for a parcel-by-parcel reassessment review. When I say reassessment, you gotta check every parcel. And it's just like if, if I, if I had a house, if I, the house I live in, and then the next door, um, a person enclosed their garage without a permit. I'm paying fair share of taxes on mine. But without a permit, the assessor's office don't know, he, he just enclosed his garage into a living area. Then what happens? Well, he's not paying his fair share. Okay? So if, if we can get those on digest, then I think it's gonna be a lot better. And that way we can, we can correct our, you know, our schedule, our pricing schedule? And our system is thirty years old. Thirty years old. Our base rate, our base rate for valuation is fifty dollars a square foot. It's been fifty dollars a square foot for fifteen years or more. So my whole thing is that is an option. Then the fourth option is what? Say as-is, very possibly get out of deal or compliance. We just talked about that. If it's not fixed, you get, they give you three years. If you fall below thirty-six percent, they give you three years to correct it. If you don't correct it, it's five dollars per parcel. That's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year for penalty. Plus, you don't get the revenue from the public utilities. So forth and so on, the money you lose with your military rates. Okay, so with all of that said, the way to correct it is a parcel-by-parcel review. And that's not saying everyone's gonna go up. That's gonna take care of itself through the market adjustments. But I, part of my job is to make sure it's just on a fair market value. But part of my job is to make sure that the digest is equitable, which is fairness and uniform. So with all that said, I'm asking the Board of Education to assist us with that. Now, the law does give you an option to do that. State law, forty-eight five two ninety-eight talks about, the school board talks about pro, things that not, that is not on digest, is what I'm talking about. Okay? And in section C down at the bottom, I know you don't have that, but I do have a copy out there for whoever wants it. A county board of education or independent board of education may expend funds to assist in paying the expenses incurred in discovering unreturned properties pursuant to this code section for the purpose of collecting unpaid school taxes. The method of such expenditure as provided in subsection and the amount thereof shall be within the discretion of the county board of education or independent board of education. So, um, I am asking for the school board for assistance in helping to get a person um, to do just that, is to discover, uh, parcel-by-parcel review. Discover items that is not on digest. Our, our existing staff is to the point with the constant growth, with the appeals, preparing and defending values, and with the day-to-day activities of assisting the public, basically is to the point of doing all they can. Uh, another person that will do nothing but review properties, parcel-by-parcel, yeah, would, would be a great hit. So I'm asking the school board for twenty-five thousand a year for three years, total savings, just three years. That's what it will take this person to do, um, the review. And I know this will benefit both the schools and the county and, and the digest and making sure, just not that, you know, it's being valued correctly, but equity and uniformity is, is the other three. That's the other two legs to this tripod. Value, uniformity, being equal, fair, equitable. Down at the bottom, I know that, um, you don't have it in front of you, but, um, revenue brought in, not budgeted. This is money that is sent in or that is revenue that comes in, um, to both the county and the school board in, in, in forms of conservation use penalties and, uh, personal property audits. You've got a company that audits personal property accounts to make sure they're paying what they should pay. And, uh, overall in twenty and twenty-one, for both of those, um, we brought in four hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and nine hundred and sixty. The school, based on the percentage of militate, which is sixty-two point thirteen percent. The school, uh, was given through that, over, you know, those years, three hundred thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars eighty-two cents. That's what the school unloaded in, that was brought in. So, uh, with all that said, I'll entertain any questions. I know my time is running out. And, uh, I do appreciate your opportunity, but yes, I'm, I'm, I'm asking for assistance.
Guy, what if, um, I've got an idea here to kinda go along with what you're asking for.
Yes.
If you put together a proposal to show what that person could bring in over the next three years and we took a percentage less commensurate with what we would pay you for that twenty-five thousand dollars?
I didn't get it. I mean, I, I didn't understand what you were asking, or...
You have a pretty good idea of what you could gain by having this extra person, correct?
Um, pretty good, pretty good. And I based that on another county that has given us the exact same thing you're asking for.
So what if you hired the person, managed the person?
Yes.
And then collected the revenue and gave us our percentage less that twenty-five thousand dollars? So we would...
Well, I don't think, I, I, I know what you're saying, but I don't think that's doable because when someone...
Cause they're gonna be working for you and your team.
Well, what, what will happen is what they find over a year's time, let's say, will be put on the digest.
Right.
And then it will be billed accordingly, just like any other bill. I mean, it will be part of their evaluation, a person's valuation. What I, what I'll be able to do is, is to keep track of what they are discovering.
Correct.
And the value, and over a year's time, how much value and how much revenue that person is generating. I mean, um, but besides, I know what you're saying. Um, besides that, um, it would just be billed accordingly, just like any other bill, it will be part of the tax bill here.
Okay, well, think about that and then we can take that offline if you wanna discuss it. I mean, somebody else might have questions too.
Sure, sure. Yes, ma'am.
Was this not already brought to us? Cause I remember us, there was three options that were given to us on this very exact thing, about to either pay them twenty-five thousand a year.
We sent it out a few weeks ago.
Yes, we sent it out a week ago.
I thought we already voted on it.
Yeah.
No, yeah, it was just sent out, so I started looking.
Yeah.
Okay, this must have dreamed about it, I've already seen it. Same as that three, and my son just was that smart.
You're absolutely right. I sent to you in lieu of me coming before yours, so you don't have some knowledge of it.
I don't think I had a dream like that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And let me preface this for new board members who may not be aware of this. But several years ago, in fact, your predecessor's predecessor did not collect what would have been to the school system somewhere between twenty-four and thirty million dollars in taxes. That was found by your predecessor. So, and I seem to agree that that's, that happened, okay? That was money we could have used to educate these kids. We pay you two cents out of every dollar, you being the tax commissioner slash assessor's office. We pay you two cents out of every dollar, you being the tax commissioner slash assessor's office, to send out those tax bills and collect the money and send us a check. So we're already paying you two percent of every taxpayer dollar that comes into the school system for that money. And I don't wanna be mean-spirited about this, but you know, part of your job is to do what you're needing to do now, right? We agreed on that? Then why should the school system pay you more money over this two percent to do part of what is already your job?
Well, for one, we're undermanned. For two, that two percent, I don't see any of it. That's not my office. And, uh, I don't collect it. There's no bar, I don't have a dog in mind. About two and a half percent.
Um, well, somebody gets that money, and it's the county basically getting the money to run the tax assessor's office and the tax commissioner's office. If I'm not right, it runs the tax commissioner's office. Not the tax assessor's office, but tax commissioner's, which is what I'm telling you.
The county does charge a two-point-five percent commission. That commission is charged by the board of commissioners, which goes into the general fund.
Right.
It does not come to directly either office.
Right. By that, I mean it goes to the board of commissioners, and that's how you guys all get paid, right?
And we could request that through the budget, but it is not through the board of commissioners to approve whether they accept that position or is for that position.
So do you think they really shoot themselves in the foot by the tune of, uh, whatever the number was you gave me earlier by not doing that? I, I just put on spot.
Jessica, introduce yourself, thank you for coming.
I'm Jessica, I'm a American tax commissioner. Guy's presentation, we just, we just discussed it this morning, so I'm more or less just here if you have a question, you can break it with us. Our office is our sector, but I hope to offer any assistance I can to respond to the general question.
Well, I think it's important, you know, there's been so many situations, we just talked about this, where there's been so many situations in the past where governments have not done a great job of working well together. And that's, I don't believe that's any one person's fault. Uh, you know, it's just, it's just what happens sometimes because political winds blow that way, and it's just the way it happens sometimes. But, you know, I think that the people that are in leadership now are great. And I think that, you know, we can all do better. And so I think that it's time that we do better. And I, you know, I think it's okay for us to have conversations like this and say, how can we, how can we do better? Cause at the end of the day, I would much rather have conversations like this and somehow figure out how to put our heads together and come up with a way to take what we, we maybe already have and use it to to better the county and somehow stop the bleeding on the taxpayers. I don't, you know, I don't want to continue to raise taxes. I don't want to, you know, continue to put the burden on, on people. Especially if we can come together as governments and have conversations. I just think if we do that, you know, especially with money we've already collected, if we can talk to each other, I just think the more conversations that we can all have together, you know, the better off that we're all gonna be as, as governments. And so, you know, I don't know. You know, I know I asked a hard question too, because obviously the, the people are my priority, as they are doing. I think that we're all good for the same reasons, that's the same thing, you know? Rather, we're all, we all pay taxes. None of us enjoy it, you know, it's, it's not fun. I mean, nothing's fun about paying taxes, I hate it. But at the same time, I understand that, you know, what's good, what's not good. But we don't want to, we don't want that to be any more of a burden that has to be. And I'm, I'm, I just want us to work together in the best we can, however that looks. You know, whatever that looks like, I do like that idea, that that's a possibility.
Any other, um, questions for Guy?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, Guy, great presentation, we appreciate the information. Oh, sorry.
I've just been asked one more question. Would it be fair to say that your staffing department, your department has not been, the staffing has not kept up with the growth over the years?
Um, I would say that, yes, very clearly. Um, there's people, I have a good staff, I have a wonderful staff, and they're well experienced. Um, but nothing has been added to that staff in many years, as far as personnel.
iPads.
Except for iPads.
That's what you got.
But see, I have to get the iPads in order to make the work flow better.
They can't come without fingers, but I get it.
That's right. I got more iPads than used to, I got two in the, in the beach yard every night. Waiting for people.
Good, appreciate your knowledge, care.
Well, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to...
Thanks, Guy, we'll put it on, we'll put it on for discussion.
Yeah, more to come.
More discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, again.
Dr. Green?
Yes, communication support is there for you.
Okay, thank you, sir, Ms. Houston.
But while she's coming, Leon, that was a great point. I think, I, I served on the Board of Assessors for a while. I think early on, when I first got here, I think there were a lot of inefficiency issues. And I think Guy has really taken the bull by the horn and, uh,
I agree.
has fixed some of those, but in the past, you're exactly right.
Yeah, it wasn't always...
We, we, we missed a lot of things because of the way the offices didn't work together and leveraged systems properly and fine things. But he's done a great job of that. And Stephanie, I think we've got to look for revenue generation opportunities to figure out how we can reduce the tax burden. And if there are people out there that are not paying taxes and should be paying, we've got to look at that.
I totally agree with that. I totally agree with that part. It's just I don't see why we have to be reactive when we're all paying.
Okay. Probably the best way to think of it is put on what you got to request for discussion on the next work session.
Okay, so, uh, we go over every month our invoices paid between ten thousand and twenty-four thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Uh, our first one is benchmark education. It was paid out of our S R A A S Fund, sixteen thousand one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. And it was for phonics and word study, free third through fifth grade at Auburn Elementary School. Our, uh, the next one is tech, tech optics, paid out of SLOSP funds, twenty-one thousand four-hundred-and-ten dollars. Is for, um, the, uh, voiceover I P phones, forty of those at County Line Elementary School. Our last one is M X N Core. It was paid out of SLOSP also, seventeen thousand sixty-six dollars. And as for our wireless access points, twenty-eight of those at Westside Elementary School. I'm also gonna quickly go over, um, our budget process as we're getting closer to, um, going into this process. I know there's a lot of information, very long presentations today, but I think that's very, um, important going into the budget process, help y'all make, uh, make good decisions. So, um, back in, uh, February, sorry, really January, so when I, when I started, uh, February, we start the budget process. Um, and we, I developed a budget video, I don't know if y'all had the opportunity to watch that, uh, before bed one night, which is straight to bed, but, um, we had, we got that budget video, we cashed out. We presented, we presented, we're gonna present the budget video at the S V T meeting in March. And for the development of the actual budget, our budget proposal was opened in January. The governor presented some recommendations of the state budget, which have not yet been approved. That was in January. Salary and benefit projections were done in January. Our preference sheets were due back from our employees in January. The deadline for the general fund budget request was in February. Um, we got our signed contracts back from our employees on March eleventh. Um, then we were able to give a lock mix out to schools. And, um, then we had a rapid recruitment event on March twelfth and nineteenth. Uh, the American Tax Assessor's Office came tonight to tell us about our projections. Um, we also talked about some projections in cabinet this morning. And then our preliminary Q D E, our state funds projection by the state is due early April. So we will, um, like I said, tonight, we're reviewing our budget, um, timeline. And then Guy Rogers came as, as, um, you know, this. Review of the draft budget by executive cabinet will happen on April twelve. Budget financial planning session with the V O E is on April twentieth, that night at six P M. I'll come over and give you our preliminary, um, budget projections. Then we will meet for the tentative budget approval for the general fund on May third. Hopefully, I'll receive the digest from Bear County around May twenty-fourth. We can start making some tentative military, uh, projections. The work session, uh, then we'll, we'll present the work at all other funds, such as our SLOSP funds, our federal programs, stuff like that, we'll present those, um, May thirty-first. And then on June seventh, you'll approve these budgets. And then I can start holding my, my public hearings for the budget and the military rates. And then if everything goes as we need it to, we can make adjustments, whatever. And by June thirtieth, we will have a budget improved military. So this is my tentative timeline. Always check before you come to a budget presentation or, um, or a public meeting, just make sure those dates are right, because it's dependent on when I get information from the state and from the county. Um, if I can get those done on time, I'll always check before we come to make sure. I will have, um, three military hearings and two budget hearings. Definitely before June thirtieth, so just look out for those and, and the public is coming. Welcome to the public presentation. That's all I have for, for that.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe? Okay, Dr. Moten?
Hello, my friend. Just wanted to share with you about a grant that I recently received from the V O E for, um, early literacy. Um, five of our elementary schools will be receiving some funding for some professional learning for teachers and for some supplies that will be based on books and reading system. The reason that the state is, is going with these grants is Professor Senate Bill forty-eight, that suffers some dyslexia and then find those characteristics. So we hope that this will present that curve when that rolls down the pipe and that goes into play and we have to extreme all of our pay per three students. So this will kind of give those a planning time and get some good processes in place. We should share that with you if you have any questions or comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Bakes, anything? Okay, we'll see you in a little while. Uh, move on to the, uh, consent agenda. We have some old business that's pending, uh, the naming of the baseball field.
Yeah, we've had no, uh, no input from the public on that, so we'll be ready to, um, take that off for a vote next week.
Okay, uh, consent agenda, everyone?
Yes.
All right, moving on to new business. John Sinclair?
Can I say how strange it is to see them all here in three D?
I know. You've, you've been hiding.
So we have approximately three thousand Dell Chromebooks that are going into life this June and will be replaced. And a reminder that in life means that Google will no longer support operating system updates for those devices, even if they're sophisticated and functional. And once they stop receiving updates, um, they rapidly will start to not function for things such as standardized testing. And they also come security risks because as they don't get updates, the operating systems are still running a stream of the least which is a particular concern right now with the state of the game. So when a Chromebook goes into life, we use this, they're going into life, end of June. An R F P was posted and twelve vendors responded. Uh, Low Bay responded Dell of Grand Rock, Texas, has done similar business with this before, met the terms of the R F P. And they are not adversely listed in the SAMD co-databases. In addition to the three thousand devices I T S will be replacing, typically this time of year, we get requests from various schools and departments for quotes for purchasing additional Chromebooks. So we are requesting approval to use this R F P, uh, for any additional purchases for the remainder of this fiscal year, up to an additional maximum of one million dollars, which is approximately, uh, just shy of three thousand additional classes. I don't expect to get anywhere near there, um, but I wanted to set the limits so that we had that flexibility. With already existing technology supply chain issues and the war in Ukraine further impacting technology supply chains, we are asking the board to vote today at the work session on this agenda item so we can proceed as quickly as possible. The financial impact is, uh, one million, five thousand ninety dollars from CARES, the I T refresh budget, and SLOSP technology renovation budgets, funds for original purchase, and then up to a million dollars from various school addition funds for potential future purchases through the end of the system here. The superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Dell Chromebooks to Low Bay Respondent Dell of Grand Rock, Texas, in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, three cents per device. Three thousand devices for a total of one million, five thousand ninety dollars. And to further authorize the use of this, bid response for additional purchases through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, for a maximum additional amount of one million dollars, subject of course to moral board reporting advice.
That's a tale of twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's a stitch, yes, ma'am. I thought I should bring you two.
Um, what do we do with the old Chromebooks?
Uh, we, we surplus them and, uh, being that this is the first major chunk, so you, it's about the five years ago or so, and now they're finally being applied. Um, we're going to most likely put out an R F P to have someone pay us to buy them. Yeah, that's kind of a chunk of...
Are they not good for like one-to-one technology, your kids at home, even if they're not good with...
We can't really allow them on our network, I think is the, the big issue.
They do represent a security risk, um, and particularly right now, um, the, the FBI, the CIA, any three-letter acronym is telling us we are being guarded.
We've always, we've always seen traffic, we're seeing increased traffic.
John, is there any reason why we're only going through June of this year?
I wanted to do that at the, at the end of the fiscal year, and then, um, I don't want to cross the fiscal years for these kind of things.
Okay, okay.
And we'll probably put out another R F P out Friday or June to start for this fiscal year.
Okay. Do we really anticipate needing a million dollars more for...
I don't, but I don't like surprises.
I don't either, I'm, I'm just concerned about that amount.
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't think we'll be eager to hear that, um. There is, uh, one possibility that, uh, if you saw, we probably can have out there, um, those are, uh, E C F emergency connectivity fund-funded Chromebooks. Um, the federal government gives grant for those, the government has opened another way for those grants. So we may possibly apply for those if we have the need. Um, we would, of course, get refunded for that, so it might be a spread of this purchase authorization for that, even though we get a little bit back. That's the only...
So do you have an extra million dollars in your budget to do that?
Um, yes, we would like it to go somewhere else, but we can go somewhere else, do another I T project, but we have funds available.
And, and, you know, a lot of these we may have been small purchases, like, uh, so they have some leftover, carry over funds and they wanna buy twenty or thirty Chromebooks. So a lot of it will be small bits adding up to larger ones. That's the most likely scenario.
So that's where the various funds can come from, that stuff, right?
Any other questions? Now we're going on this tonight in executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
As part of our renovation work this summer, uh, new switches are needed to upgrade and expand networks at Ramlet, Kennedy, and Bassam. An R F P was posted and six vendors responded. Uh, Low Bay responded M X N, met the terms of the R F P. They've done similar business with this before satisfactorily, and they're not adversely listed in SAMD co. The financial impact is broken down into three schools as shown, for a total of forty thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars total for leave-on budgets. Superintendent recommends awarding the purchase of Rubus Switches to Low Bay Respondent M X N, voice talk toward it in the amount of forty thousand seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars.
Questions? Consent agenda?
I do, actually. Uh, so a couple of things happened in the tech industry, this is the trend from the last few years. Um, what is particularly the, the ninety thousand, the eighty thousand, um, you'll get somebody from California, uh, who just throws a big wall of the sticks. I don't know how they make the money, they never win any more bids, so we get these outrageous responses, uh, quite often. Then, uh, the, on the other end, what happens is, uh, particularly when you're purchasing products from big manufacturers, they have a preferred vendor. The, usually it's the first vendor that brought the customer to the manufacturer gets really aggressive, outrageous pricing, that... It's really aggressive outrage pricing that other, other vendors just can't get. That kind of skews our, our, they process, they have to get really good pricing. Uh, so it's really worked out for our benefit, but not to the benefit of anybody else.
Consent agenda? Okay. Thank you, Jim. Jason Ersh.
Hello everybody, good night.
Great.
All right, I'll make it quick, uh, two things real quick, we just want to change our fleet queue of car vendor. Um, we had some custom service issues with them. We usually park, park the fleet on the Appalachian side because it costs us a few, a few looks, you know, we're outside of kind of what we're looking at uh, with the department. Anyway, that's a few customer services usually cutting, uh, so we just, you know, the bag waiting, what was out there? Uh, we came up with wet scors, uh, basically the same as five thousand dollars a month fees, uh, that we pay right now. And, uh, also good support queue box, so to say, uh, per transaction, stuff like that. So names and names, but when you go through some hundred thousand gallons a year, you know, it adds up and all that. But, uh, basically recommend superintendent recommend switching the fuel car company to Universal Premium from Universal Premium, uh, over to wet, uh, fuel car. Radlance buses, uh, basically we just transfer the money from that account over to the new company, no, no cost structure.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
All right, second part of this, uh, basically we need some money for fuel. Uh, everybody knows fuel's what up. This is no brighter, no brighter. Uh, basically this time last year, we were spending five hundred for a gallon of fuel. Uh, now we're three seventy-eight, so pretty, pretty, you know, pretty big switch. What turns into, we used about twenty-five thousand gallons a month, that's just kind of back to the federal trips, things like that. Uh, basically spiked us up almost fifty thousand dollars a month, a lot of what we paid for. So we went four-six thousand a month to nine-four thousand five hundred, give or take a few hundred dollars. Uh, so we're requesting five hundred eighty-nine thousand to finish out the school, so.
Questions?
Are we getting any of this money back from the government? From the feds for fuel because of COVID or whatever the, or the?
No.
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 The biggest difference on me is what we put in our tanks at the department, we don't pay the tax toll. So what you see on the roof side of the pole, we pay roughly thirty cents a gallon difference. But with fuel guards, the, the distance we travel from one side of the county to the other kind of slows it down.
So the Georgia tax thing won't help us because we're not.
No, half or much, no, no, this hasn't helped.
The electric buses are in order?
Yeah, we're looking at it. We're looking at it, but I'd like that to be a slow time, so.
Consent agenda? Thank you, sir.
Yes, uh, the, uh, biggest thing is after hours, I'll put it a few, it's propane. Uh, propane, the feds are offering so many cities to switch over propane fleets, uh, like there's one thing, you can spend fifteen thousand dollars per bus if we need to miss an old bus replacing the propane bus. Uh, that's like some of the flip side of it, uh, is having space in the infrastructure. We don't have to pay for the infrastructure, so it's a split up front. What they do, they charge us per unit, we say per gallon, but per unit on propane, uh, but it's typically more expensive than diesel. So again, I grew that stress yourself, you know, you know, explaining the propane, explaining all that, but what we need is all inventory, uh, the technology, you know, diagnos, those, like, things like that. You just kind of, it's just kind of being learned very soon with the, or anything like that. Looking at it, just, you know, don't know where we're going to land with it. Depending, again, depending on what we put in the infrastructure, we have to have, you know, how big a propane tank is above ground. So what we're good, you know, transportation, we can, we, we have to, we can go out, so, um, other than that, that we'll, we'll pay it. They have, uh, Hall County, uh, those are some pretty good, Hall County does some pretty good stuff with propane. Uh, just kind of watching that, good thing is one of our neighbors is doing things. First, we did kind of see their trial there, you know, kind of what they challenged they had with, like. Yeah, we.
I'm also, you know, we made, made the joke about the liquor, but it's coming and, you know, we kind of want to be careful. We don't go all in on propane and then have to turn around and go all in the other way too, so it's.
Right, well, one more thing I have on propane is having a fuel extension.
Well, that was what I was about to say too, where are we going to get them?
You can't use propane.
One over on Appalachian side and one over here too to get that for.
Right, yeah, so you got bigger.
The infrastructure piece, you know, Hall's already got two or three different bus barns around the town and we have, and we have one, so.
Right.
Yeah, boarding vans, you know, you have to, you can't always run them then, so, yeah.
Yeah, there'd be some tech, there'd be some unique challenges. You're right, everyone, compensation.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Colonel?
Good evening. We're asking superintendent for recommending approval of our five-year local facilities plan and signing a resolution in State Department of Education confirming that approval. This is something we do, we update our plan annually, so we require to have a few of the facilities team every five years. So a couple of weeks ago, we had representatives from Hall County, Winnet, Paul, Newton, and Social Circle to review our plan. And, um, there, there's no magic to it really. When our buildings turn twenty years old, uh, we usually come to you and ask you if you can renovate this. And I think that because we get money from the state in that timeframe. And as we grow, we're also able to draw down funds to build new schools. So we use our plan, we follow our plan, it is a tool for us, um, that we follow very closely this summer. Uh, we applied to renovate the additions at Grand, Kennedy, and Yargo, those are twenty years old. Next year, that's in the county line, year after that, Winnebago, Amherst, Morris. So we're just, we're following that birthday, uh, schedule there. Uh, and then as we grow, um, we have, uh, we show the roads that the high school level right now, state, they have eleven classrooms. So we'll apply to them this summer so that we can build the next phase of assets, so. The other thing we do is when a building turns twenty years old, we usually apply for those funds right there at that twenty-year mark. But if we don't, we apply for it in the twenty-second year, the twenty-third year, we're still accumulating money from the state based on that need. It's ten years for a roof, it's fifteen years for kitchen equipment, it's twenty years, uh, for renovations. So we're loading that stuff into our plan, showing the state, hey, we've got all this need. Even though we may not renovate that HVAC system in year ten, we're still showing them we have that need. So we want to make that as great as we can so that as much money gets dumped into our account and state as possible. So we follow that closely and, uh, this is just that point in time, uh, where we need to have our five-year plan approved.
I do want to say Joe and his team did a great, great job with that as always, and, uh, I was in on the calls, um, all virtual this time instead of coming up here, but, um, the other, other districts and the state votes were raving as usual about how well they do and his team, Jennifer utilized that and leveraged it, so, great job there.
Thank you, John, to different departments who provide information for that plant, transportation, IT, business services, school to nutrition, they're all part of that plan as well, they provide us with their updated practices, so appreciate all their help.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next item, uh, we're asking the superintendent to recommend a state of cost limitation of six hundred thousand dollars for renovation to our parent county school professional development center. Uh, in November of last year, we all approved strong light construction, construction manager for non-state funded projects. Communicated at that time that we would come back to you periodically, um, with non-state projects that exceed the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold to ask for your approval. We're sort of biting this building off in chunks because we, we never leave this building, we don't go away in the summer. So we had to attack it a little bit differently. You may notice the lights are different, that was the first day, and it's getting our lights changed out, um, from fluorescent to LED. And that was pretty painless, they came in in the evenings, the contractor did, and swapped those out in weeks' time. The next phase incorporates several things, um, that is, uh, John normally piggybacks with us when we do our renovations and changes out the network cable. And so this gives him an opportunity to do that as well. We also like to change out the wet sprinklers in our IT server room and HR record room and make those a cry system. Quite a bit of protection for those systems and documents. We also, we're looking to convert several offices on business service hall, cubicles, offices. And a big piece of it is also the flooring. Just, you know, we changed the flooring in this room several years ago, but we really need to do that in, in offices and cubicles and quarters. Like we talked about, twenty years, we renovated our school buildings and we follow the same pattern and try to for our non-state buildings as well. So we're at that mark now for this building and it's just, it's time to freshen things up a little bit.
Recent, recent flooding incident we had kind of spurred us along a little bit on that too.
We did, we had a pipe burst on the HR, uh, business services hallway and, uh, that's prompted to drive the sprinklers just a piece, um, also changing the flooring. There was a plan on there that, that sort of furries along that direction.
And if there's no questions, we're going to expedite that and vote on this tonight as well in executive session.
For that, just so we can get materials ordered, not have to.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Houston is back.
All right, so, um, somehow this service has got tasked a long, long time ago with new furniture and chairs and stages and et cetera from school to school. Um, we currently have two box trucks. Uh, both trucks will need major components replaced due to the level of oil consumption from the high mileage on engines. The lift gates have electrical and hydraulic, hydraulic backward issues that make them unpredictable and difficult to operate, especially under heavy loads. Um, transportation mechanics are, are confronted with major repairs needed to both of these trucks to keep them in continuous service. Um, business services is currently looking for used box, box trucks that will be, that will request that the transportation mechanics assist us with inspecting the vehicle and the board allows to purchase when a vehicle becomes available and passes our inspection. Uh, we will ensure that the price is within the limits of the Kelly Blue Book value. So we are, uh, superintendent recommends a purchase of a box truck for up to fifty thousand dollars. We currently have two box trucks that we're looking at right now, the transportation is already vetted. Um, and if, uh, y'all approve this, we're asking unfortunately for you to approve it tonight, I hate, I hate to ask that. But if you could, uh, we do have two box trucks that are under fifty thousand, we're all going to get one, um, but available to us now when y'all can approve it.
Okay, so my question is, if you have two box trucks now that you're having problems with, and if you only want to replace one, is that feasible, I mean, are there days when you need both those trucks in operation?
Uh, there's, there's days, but I think, thank you, you want, you want to talk to, is one worse than the other? And we're only requesting one, that's all we budgeted for, and our budget, we don't really want to go into the financial balance or anything for it. Um, so we only budgeted for one.
Okay, well.
Yes, but same thing we do with the buses, we just take the list for two weeks, it's based on the, what repairs are needed versus how long, you know, the longevity we believe it has. So that's same thing with the hot structures, we just have one that's really, really in need, or the other one's not so bad, we could wait a little bit of time on it. So just base it, base it on the need, definitely to, um, be ideal to replace both of them. You know, if that was the lesson of the board, but, uh, based on last, we just feel like we're just out way out, way out, you know, what we face to, you know, come down.
I'll just look for another box bus in the next budget, in the next budget.
Okay, so no other questions, we're going on this tonight as well, let's, ten o'clock, thank you.
All right, um, we have some, some pretty good news. Um, superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve a one-time salary supplement to all eligible employees and contract custodians net costs to be offset by state Georgia. Estimated cost will be from the CARES, S R two funds of one million ninety-eight thousand dollars. So on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Governor Kemp announced a two thousand dollars salary supplement for all eligible QBE, quality basic education, state-funded, uh, school-level staff in Georgia's K through twelve couple of schools. The estimated cost is going to be four point four million dollars, but the total reimbursement from George DOE is three point three million dollars. So it's a difference of one point one million dollars. And the superintendent is requesting the salary supplement extend to all of our eligible employees who are not funded through the state QBE funding formula. This is our federal programs people, our pre-pay teachers. Uh, the salary supplement extends to all of our eligible contract custodians who are not covered under the state salary supplement plan. They're not covered by the QBE, two thousand dollars for full-time and one thousand dollars for part-time for our loaders. Um, employees and contract custodians will be eligible for the supplement if they are actively employed on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. And special rules will apply for those on FMLA or workers comp. And this salary supplement, it will be distributed to eligible employees in mid-April, uh, not in a check, it will be in their ACH, um, just put into their bank accounts. The supplement is not earnable compensation for TRS, therefore we do not have to pay the TRS percentage on, um, this amount or will be deducted from their two thousand dollars.
Great news? Consent agenda?
So the government, bill, uh, so the government.
Sure, so, yeah, we have employees that, uh, sure, uh, we have employees of the state a lot, that's a number of teachers. And, um, we have more teachers than that because we feel that we need more teachers than that. Uh, because our needs, they, they're two years behind what we really have. Um, and then we also have our pre-pay programs not funded by QBE, um, so we would like to cover them. It's not fair for teachers that work the same as hard, if not harder, not to get that supplement.
I'll move, I'll move through that. No, we can't. Yeah, it's kind of.
We will talk about that during the budget process too, as I always do, complain about that. Our members are not included.
You get it back anyways, Ricky.
Thank you. You're talking about this, Chris?
Yeah, I'll grab the name, um, exemplary committee assessment review, you all has, have seen, participated in that and have the information on that, um, it's just time to, uh, we'll ask you at the board meeting to, to, um, vote on putting that in the record basically, and that goes towards the, uh, GSBA. Um, as part of the review that GSBA does, uh, for the School Board Association, uh, for the Exemplary Board, which you all have had for the last six, six times it's been offered, I believe, straight. Um, so that, that piece is there, um, for you to take a look at and we'll just ask you to, to vote to, to adopt it.
What is that one?
That's the exemplary committee assessment review, and you all did the board assessment and then we had the smaller committee that does, it's made up of, I think, uh, one board member and community members, that they do the same, basically the same assessment. Yeah, it's just, uh, we want other stakeholders to be involved with it also. And then the next one on number ten is GSBA's legislative positions, uh, those are, uh, included for you there. Again, this is an annual, uh, thing that we have to turn in, uh, later than April eighteenth this year. So if y'all review those, there are any changes, anything on those lines, let us know. We'll need to get those in before April eighteenth, we'll ask for the vote on, on those going forward. And then type of that also is the GSBA delegate and alternative appointments. So, um, we'll ask you all to, uh, pick a, a delegate and alternative, uh, delegate for the upcoming GSBA Assembly. pick a, a delegate and alternative, uh, delegate for the upcoming GSBA Assembly Conference down in, uh, Savannah, over the sun, again.
Do we need to do that?
Every year. Um, you can do that.
Tuesday?
Tuesday night would probably be the best, best thing to do.
Who's going? Is everybody going?
Jordan's going, sure.
Oh, well, he's not here. Let's make him a delegate.
So we'll, we'll, uh, let y'all nominate. Let us know who we need to send in on that.
We'll take care of that. Okay.
That's how it works.
All righty, um, anything else, Chris?
Uh, no.
We're going to move into executive session now, um, to discuss and order right upon the appointment, employment compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal. Or periodic evaluation or reign of a public officer or employee or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent.
Yeah, Ricky?
Yes.
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 Yes.